Good evening. It's five thirty, we'll call this two thirteen, Kathy North. I will begin with an invitation by Councilor Parker, followed by the President, please.
First, we said thank, thank you, Lord God, for being brought all by yourself, Lord God. Father God, we just ask you just bless now, bless the nation, the country, our community, Lord God. Bless each and every one standing here today, Father God. Father God, we ask you just come in the midst, touch our mind hearts, Father God. Father God, let us get a one accord and do your will, Lord God. Father God, we just ask you for your grace and your mercy, Lord God. Father God, continue to be with us as our day continues, Lord God. Father God, these and all blessed thy name in your name, it is so in the name of Jesus Christ.
All right, good evening, thank y'all for joining us here tonight. Before we get started doing the rec, I just have some celebrities in the film tonight. Our police chief, Sonny Glad, I saw you here, appreciate you coming. Chief Rogers, Lawrence, glad to have you here. Representative Jones, fourteen, Representative Gill, twenty-fourty-two, and then Dan Harmon representing. Jeff Dunn is also glad to have you here, as well as, I think I saw Sheriff Nelson. It's a chair, glad to have you here always. Absolutely.
And please, Representative, Dr. Sasso, from, he used to work in prison during college, hold up a probe of a champ, and he's just a marvelous person.
There's a bridge in the gap, I believe, in Port here, and Mr. Sasso, Dr. Sasso's an old neighbor of mine. So my little brother gave him a time back in the day. All right, first, we have approval of the agenda. The only thing in prison gaps can be up there, like, council. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda, if not, I'll call for a motion to approve.
We'll go second.
Motion by the Spark Second, none of you care, all of them, please raise your right hand. All right, next, we have approval of the minutes. We have several. One thing to note, the first section on the Community Public Works, it is two pages. At the top of the second page, it does say, always take ten, that is, by just continuation of the first page, just for.
How much you like this approval, Mr. Chairman? Go along, we're going another time. Make motion to be approved, minutes from April fifth, twenty twenty-three, May first, twenty twenty-three, and nine twenty-two, May twenty-third, twenty.
You all have the minutes, four seconds. We have seven, seven, second on this right. Are any additions or deletions? All those, please raise your right hand. Next, we have public comments. Mr. Woodmire did sound up first, but he's speaking here just a little bit, so I'll skip over you if that's all right. All right. Um, next, Ms. Sandra Jones.
My name is Sandra Jones. I have been visually trying to get this issue settled with my property. Uh, being, uh, recklessly surveyed to benefit of someone else. That old subdivision where I live, it, 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 it has been wrecked by four toddlers. And I have talked to y'all and talked to you guys about, what are you gonna do about? What are you gonna do? Are you gonna fix me, make me home? The only property my mother and father ever was able to afford, and then he took, he took and gave it to somebody else. They paid him though. Their house is right here. They wanted more land, I'm right there in the middle. So he surveyed my property and his property. And the other property over here, she went and bought this property over here to justify. Todd, he did that she would have all that property. And another thing, the map, the GSA map, that map is not right. Now, it might look right on paper, you can do the numbers, it will come up, but it does not come as right when you come out there and look at my property. I have chased you down. And you feel me? I mean, everybody, I mean, slaying, um, uh, uh, they'll turn Jones office. I'm telling them what is going on down here. Now, y'all, if we want things to work, we got to learn to be honest and true. Especially when you dealing with so many amount of people. We see what's going on all over the world. So we got to do, try to do some things, but I appreciate it if you would meet with me. Appreciate it if you would come to my house. Because, and I'm gonna start, when he went, when, when I wrote a letter to license board, for him to come to license board, license board, they said that they was corresponding with me, we gonna get. I'm down to it, yes, we don't get to go to the year, me. But the day the license person came back to my home, her name is Cheryl Wood. Cheryl Wood come out there, she let me see the letter, where he said he apologized for doing what he did, but they would not give me a copy of the, of the letter. So I'm just, I'm, I'm asking you, just to give me my property back. Mister Hicks, can you come to my house and I show you what happened? So I can't, okay, will you meet with me? He can't meet with me. Oh, he can't, okay, I tell you what, if, if you can't, I'm gonna keep talking. I'm gonna keep talking and I'll keep talking about it, y'all, because you have to feel like that if you do what in the sixties, you know what happened? This is in my mother's house, I'm a champ, and so I never knew why my mother and father is wrong to put on pieces of paper. But you know what? One thing they told us, not take things, okay? Racist people, the things that they do underhanded. Now, I'm gonna move on, so, cause I gotta get them up here. Uh, when all of those people were getting their land tax free, I was mad when he came from down to the license board, and he got, and you know, he got away with everything. So I said, you done did something else. All those properties, furniture, he put his name all over. Uh, on my own children, all back behind my house, everywhere. Turned it in. I turned it in, and John came, and I said, where is my tip money? Cause I didn't know that there wasn't any tip money until someone told me. So I didn't get no tip money. Do anybody know what happened to the tip money? When you turn someone, anybody know? Well, okay, you'll have to answer, but I would even ask you, it's to be true. If what, what we, what we pay for, we deserve, you cannot continuously have four toddlers, I didn't raise or in the, in the court house. People who got fired, they were there, was their fathers. But it, they was fully doing the work that the surveyor brought in for them to, uh, to put in. The paperwork is, is messed up. You need to look at this paperwork and get this paperwork right, because it is not right. Todd does whatever Todd wants to do. And I thank you all, and I pray to God that you hear me in this, because that's what's wrong with us. We no longer take God seriously. And you know what? That's why all this stuff is happening, because he's sick of us. He's sick of us. He's sick of us playing church. So we need to get it together, come together, do it right there, if you want what you say you want. Thank you.
The council, the bridge police suspect. Twenty percent. Sounds like a very small number. But in my research, I've discovered that county has forty-five bridges. Twenty percent of them are closed. That's nine bridges, a lot of bridges. Inspection cycle is coming up again. Our probability, more bridges are going to close. I've met with the CTC, they're saying that they don't have the money to place the bridges. Six of these bridges have been closed for four years. You've got hundreds of taxpaying citizens that are benefiting, or who are rather, uh, rather losing out of inconvenient travel time. Inconvenient response times for EMS and fire, police, postal service. And I don't come just complaining, I see that you're only on the program to talk about it to me. But if more bridges closing, we're gonna eventually end up in a transportation license center, or a family. I will come with just a complaint, there's a possible solution that we can things that we can do to fix these bridges. Please, the greatest, understand that we have some excess money in reserve. You take part of that money, replaces many of the bridges as we can. Um, as Youngs and I had talked, you replace them with a whole bridge, give you twenty-year lifespan on. You replace it with what's called a Bailey Bridge, that came from the Eternia. It was developed during, for military during World War Two. It doesn't take as many people, so it won't take as much money, um, to go that route. The other thing that we can do, from these youngs, start a fund to set aside to replace roads and bridges. I come to you again, thanking you, still, Miss Hall, afraid to bring her husband home. You know, she's afraid that if he gets sick, that EMS won't be able to get there in time. So I have said all that I have said, and I thank you. It is not an easy job for you building this county, but we appreciate it all. Y'all, please, just, please, just speak some.
Thank you, Representative. We have two better agendas, you'll hang out, sure, we'll be pleased with what you have here. All right, up next, I'm gonna call Mr. Wrighton. He's gonna present a presentation on correctional officers. We did not meet back in May, when that actually transpired.
Scott Lewis, gonna share for us. Guests can join me up here real quick. We did. We had a police week, we recognized our police last month, and somehow forgot about our correctional officers, and that week is May eighth through the twelfth. So we have a proclamation today to recognize them. And as, as important as our police are, our correctional officers are equally important in what they do to protect us and keep those that are offensive to our local citizens in prison, and also to equip those people for the next step in their life when they are released, so that they can be good citizens and represent Lawrence County well. So let me read, read this proclamation. Whereas Lawrence County Correctional Officers are responsible for supervising offenders at Johnson Detention Center, and whereas correctional officers promote the safety of all Lawrence County citizens by supervising offender conduct and behavior to avoid conflicts and escapes, and whereas correctional officers are well-trained and dedicated to promoting positive behaviors and outcomes, which improve offenders' post-release success. And whereas correctional officers are crucial to a statewide reentry initiative and, and reducing redicism as, as they play a critical role in preparing offenders for successful assimilation into their communities after release. And whereas correctional officers strive to maintain a safe working and living environment at Johnson Detention Center, often in the face of significant challenges and dangers. And whereas correctional officers, we, offers an opportunity to acknowledge and honor Lawrence County's correctional officers for the vital contributions that they made each and every day for the sacrifices that they make to protect the citizens of Lawrence County.
Please, you pass on our appreciation, all your folks back at Detention Center. We appreciate all of you, yes, sir. All right, up next, I'm gonna call Representative Doug Gill, I believe he has a few accolades to give out this evening.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, council members, for allowing us to do this. You know, this is one part of my job that I really enjoy doing, and that is recognizing people for the outstanding work that they do. Again, Representative Jones, we're up here today, representing the Lawrence delegation. Representative McCravy is, went into the seating that Mary thought as far as come on, had three o'clock today, and said, okay, I'll make it. And Danny Burden and Mark Willis have asked me, in their regrets, if they could, I'll be here. So right the other day, you have me and Representative Jones to do this, we want to recognize our three Officers of the Year, and in Lawrence County, that's for Clinton, the city of Lawrence, and the Sheriff's Department, County Sheriff's Department. And we're gonna start off with our rich certificate, Representative Jones was going to, we have a a certificate from the State House, and we have a flag that is fallen over the State House, and we're gonna recognize them as well, I hope I'll try to be as brief as I can to read these. SRO David Lawless is not, is not here today. Is that right, isn't it?
Right.
And so we have, have time documents officer, if you want to come up and accept this form and to let y'all know. And Officer Duggins, Duggins is the one, the first recipient of the Officer of the Year award, as he does. So I'm gonna read this, or try my best. Says, Members of the House, Representative, amend and recognize SRO David Lawless. Congratulations, SRO Lawless, SRO Lawless, with Clinton Public Safety upon his nomination for Lawrence County twenty twenty-three Officer of the Year, in addition to his role as a school resource officer. Uh, SRO Lawless is a valuable part of the department's training cadre. We recommend him for, we commend him for the outstanding job that he does in providing a safe learning environment in our schools, providing valuable resources to community staff members, all kinds of different relationships with youth and protecting the students so they stay our, or their standard. He is, he is up to help raise standards and intentions. He re, sorry, we recommended SRO Lawless to be for the example that he has set in this law enforcement, and the sacrifice he has made every day to serve and protect. Keep up the good work and stay safe, we wish him continued success in his endeavors. This sounded by Speaker of the House, Ralph Smith, and the Coach of the House, Charlie. The next one is Lieutenant Timothy Byrd, here right now. His grandfather, he is, he is at a conference right now, and he is, his grandfather's gonna set this form. Yeah, he will, he will grant them. And the House of Representatives, Commander, recognize Lieutenant Timothy Byrd. Congratulating Lieutenant Byrd with the Lawrence County Sheriff's Office, all being named Lawrence County twenty twenty-three Officer of the Year. Lieutenant Byrd has been with the Sheriff's Department for ten years, and is a member of the SWAT team, and a mentor to, to a child in the community. We commend Lieutenant Byrd on the example he has set and the standards he has upheld. His steadfast dedication to excellence, honor, and taken new provides inspiration to all who has the privilege to serve with him. We express our sincere gratitude, Lieutenant Byrd's invaluable, dedicated service to law enforcement. In fact, positive, he makes every day to serve and protect the citizens of Lawrence County. Keep up the good work, stay safe, and we wish him continued success in all three areas. Last one, y'all, we want to recognize guys, and we tell how much we appreciate all of them, is Sergeant Casey Jones. He is with the City of Lawrence Police Department, on Jones. So, Members of the House, Representative, commend and recognize Sergeant Casey Jones. Congratulating Sergeant Casey Jones with the Lawrence Police Department upon his nomination for Lawrence County twenty twenty-three Officer of the Year. Sergeant Jones heads up the Department's Traffic Safety Unit, and is responsible for reducing serious traffic accidents in the City of Lawrence by more than sixty percent. Is also responsible for an eighty percent reduction in traffic accidents. His work has saved many lives and continues to do so on a daily basis. We commend Sergeant Jones for the example he has set and the standards he has upheld, which presents our sincere gratitude for the valuable debt and dedication he served for law enforcement, and the sacrifice he makes every day to serve and protect the citizens of Lawrence. Uh, keep up the good work, stay safe, we wish you continued success.
Chairman, Council, thank y'all for letting us do that, I appreciate. Representatives, thank y'all, we have them always. I just talked to my Echo, we appreciate Penner, also Lawless, and Sergeant Jones for all y'all do. I'm going to your chiefs and chair, for all y'all to keep our communities safe throughout this county. A task and a regret for you. Uh, any comments from council before we perform? All right, we'll move on to the reports, we do need to accept an official resolution for the correctional week. Resolution twenty twenty-three, that CEO. Much good for. Much love, Mr. Wrighton.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tom. Any discussion? Thank you again to our. Always, please raise your right hand. Got another celebrity in the, in the audience, and I recognize everybody else. Previous council member, Gary Daniel, we're glad to have you with us. All right, up next, reports to council, we're gonna hear this evening from Bridge in the Gap. Um, Calvin Dukemeyer, he has some force, gonna tell us what's going on in Bridge in the Gap, all the great things, and and he has requests of us too, rest of the seat.
Okay, thank y'all for having me, Chairman. Doug, for opportunities to serve our great counties, yes, in our great counties. Um, originally, yeah, this entering to this ninth year, we went over to the tenth year, and just kicked off our summer camp, like we, like last count, starting, and more than calling. Cause what we're doing now, we extended our be up to kids with disabilities. Some challenges, yeah, right now, legal blind student on campus. Uh, we have several kids with autism. Um, but we embrace them, and our program is really equipped with some great people like Dr. DeSalsa, as well as others who help these kids on a daily basis. Um, we have people calling down the end, trying to come to our camp. Um, what we try to do every day is make sure they all have a slide academically, work on their reading, writing, and math. They also have public speaking, we need to do some foreign language, as well as music. Um, and then we get into our gardening, teaching the seed, they plant a seed, and they see it grow. And then we, we travel a little bit with the kids, the kids read about it, we go see about it. So it's been working, uh, I thank God for effort of the parent, one key component of our program, parental involvement. You have the kids in our program, and have stayed at least one day out of the week, maybe a couple hours at our program. This is the only right, if we extend it, I, we are hundred percent volunteer, don't pay them for it, hundred percent. So if you pull out records from Secretary of State, you see that seventy-five, eighty percent of our honey goes to our program. So today, I, I wanted to come and, and ask for health, financial health, or parking lots, to make it more accessible. But I want to be inclusive. We want to make sure that, that kids and adults want to participate in our gardening. We have a great council on campus now, and we want to be able to make sure we pay the parking lot as well, as well as pay the, oh, interest rate for our, uh, people with disabilities. And that's why I wanted to come to the council tonight and, and ask for assistance, some assistance. Uh, give y'all an estimate. Animal company is going to, to the paving. I had two, two other people, but I wasn't, wasn't assured of them, they want us to put half, half mighty down. I don't, too, we don't do that, let people pay, and then work with them, try to animal this logo, so. We're local, so, so, please, the council, I think the last figure on that was twenty-six. Uh, what do they, I'll write twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty, twenty-six dollars. Um, to make it more accessible, make parking lots accessible. And, cause right now, we just have rocks, and it's discouraging to, to, to.
Thank you for that, for, first, I want to say, I appreciate what you do, I remember when you kind of, yeah, that started, how long ago now?
Ten years.
Ten years, seems like longer, uh, you know, so much work, it makes it go by fast, but thank you for all you do for that community and all the community, and I'm glad here that there's folks even down there, willing to come, be a part. Thank you for all you do for that community and all the community, and I'm glad to hear that there's folks even down there willing to come be a part of your program, that's, that's incredible. Uh, are there any questions from council, Bridgerton Gap, before we discuss the funding request?
Anytime you, uh, all buildings of, of, be handled, yes. For, serves someone and someone be. Um, but have you, uh, researched anything else about the, the, um, chairman? Sure, and. Have you, have you reached out other than to the county?
Uh, yes ma'am, yes ma'am, um. You just received some proceeds from, uh, Lawrence County Foundation. Um, that's, and so because we wanted to, and we wanted to extend the parking lot itself. Participate who are disabled. In our learning program, I think a lot of city citizens now they need this. And not just city citizens, but again, people with special needs. And, and I'm trying to be as inclusive as possible.
Being inclusive, I think they'll do a good one, but I don't want to, sure, I have a good. Thank you much.
And this is the work of all calls, one of the many nonprofits we have here in the county. Uh, you were serving all of them, personally, you've understood, but also now this inclusion of. A A and especially A is a huge step, uh, nobody has a lot to do and we don't have very many. Uh, correct that, um. Council, my, this is one of my organization, I'll take a motion from someone else, of course, but, um. Uh, Fund One Fifty-Six is a special. Project fund we have, we do things out of it from time to time, um, edition. Something like Greenwood, we did the Joanna Sidewalk, Joanna Coalition, a few years back, uh, we've done. Uh, we did A A Playground with Andy, I have that fund two, three years ago. Um, it's just a fund that's available for things like this, the current balance of that fund should be right around half a million dollars, give or take, if you can, yes. Um, I think it would be more than appropriate, uh, to assist all of our communities and our many support systems, uh, on this. Very wonderful, but, uh, make a motion.
Make a motion to have, please, uh. Yeah. I don't know how much you got, I'm gonna say, uh, twenty thousand dollars. I would say the whole complete thing based on what you got from, uh, the, yeah. Foundation, I don't know what you got there, but you know, it's making a whole. Uh, I'd like to see us try to make that whole, whatever that song was, uh, up to. Amount up to twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars.
So you give all that out to the grant that I received, okay, you're saying?
Yeah, since he said that was for, you, that was for that particular project, right?
What'd you receive on that grant, twenty? Five hundred, we got a hundred dollars, okay. Seven, all right. All right, that's my second, I wouldn't figure out that personally, I'll add a lot. That'd be twenty-four to twenty-six, that sound good? All right, so the, uh, restate the motion, if I mess it up, correct me, Senator. Senator, if you'd like to make a motion to. Our project, uh, up to twenty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars subsidize the grant I received from the community foundation. Uh, bridging the gap to, uh, make their parking lot A A accessible. That were, I know it's set by, I think, Mr. Carroll, is there any others coming? Off the book, all those, and clearly, really great, right? Passes seven zero, just fair pick in that little, uh, one fifty-six. Thank you, council, I think, and probably do, please keep up the good work, uh, it's solid, good to see you, and probably continue to do this, I didn't, but, absolutely, please.
That's just why. You have to know that the place itself is a place to go and see. It's our place. I am fairly new to the area, when they tell me what the place looked like in the nineteen sixty. And nineteen seventy. And why went that far? There were prominent people living there, that this could be a, some, some kind of a, a light. So it could expand. At war, because the place is beautiful. The community is beautiful, next. And the target is place where kids could learn, the community could learn and say, oh, I've got to go back to my. Backyard and do the same thing, it's a motivator. And that's what excites me about our. And it, it is sad sometimes, people in Columbia don't see what we look like. What they look like, you know, it's that rural area out there, no, it's a beautiful, lush region we are in. That need to be communicated. And this is one way of teaching our kids what the place looks like, what it can be also. So I get excited about it, and connecting kids with disabilities, connecting communities with other communities that could. Make us more thankful for people, thank you.
All right, next, we'll move into old business, um, council, through all appointments, uh. Before we get into the two recommendations we have, are there any council members? Commissions this. Right here, none will jump right in, the first one up is, uh, Lawrence County Water Sewer, initial recommendations, if you have anything to say.
Yeah, the serious case, but, all right, thank you, uh, you, uh, so you've already seen the letter in your.
Packet that we rested, Mr. Higgs, uh, it's just that time of year where, uh, their term expires, their term July one of thirty, our first, sorry, anywhere, December ones. Um, you see there considerations below, I'll take a motion to approve the names that I've recommended.
Motion approved, and then you just have, second.
Question on this, Brian, and second, on Mr. Carroll, there any discussion? And I'll call for a vote, although, please, please raise your right hand. Same fashion, uh, we have a letter from the Dwayne's Board. There was something, we just want to call a vacancy, I read correctly. Um, and. Nice, being recommended to your position of vacancy. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
That we approve, uh, this rise to, to represent the practical plan, but also this gentleman, Wallace, to represent the. The income sector and the Dwayne's, you know, with the commission.
All right, we have the motion by Ms. Anderson.
Second.
Second by Miss Clark. There any discussion? Although, please, please raise your right hand. Seven zero, and good for the record, I think we'll go back and re-stand, but there are four. Counsel District, uh, and Susan Curry. Uh, Counsel District One, Mr. Hollingworth, uh, Council District Four, uh, Team. And then, uh, municipal district, which operates between Lawrence, Duncan, and, uh, Mr. Jimmy Young has been. Always recommended and criticized to represent the municipal district. Thank you. All right. Um, up next. Um. We have three public hearings. Budgets, uh, says, uh, you go forward, I'll open the four public hearings, you like to speak. Please step forward and state your name, the first one is public hearing on ordinance nine forty-one, which is the general operating budget. Uh, kind of six oh eight, I'll open the floor for public hearing. See, no one, we'll close public hearing on ordinance nine forty-one. Next, uh, ordinance nine forty-two, which is the prior budget. And that's still six oh eight, or open the floor for public hearing, if you'd like to speak, please step forward and state your name. See, no one, we will close four public hearing on nine forty-two by our budget. And we will open the floor, ordinance nine forty-three, local office tax. Uh, for now, open six oh nine, if you'd like to speak, please step forward and state your name. See, by one, we'll close public hearing for ordinance nine forty-three. Which part next, we'll hear, we'll have.
You'll have one, double one.
Okay, yeah, so there'll be another public hearing and, and final reading, uh, for those budgets at the subsequent meeting later on this. All right, we'll move into new business, I'll call, oh. Our wonderful, the Emigre. Or the, uh, Ms. Kirkland, or the, on. Emergency brand.
Um, and coming on the annual basis to the local emergency management performance grant that L E M P G that state provides to each county, expect to turn again this year to all of the. The grant itself will reflect the budget for Ju, from June first to twenty, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And the amount, exclamation grant in the amount, this is not confirmation, this is not, this has a second confirmation. But last year was the same, uh, sixty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, it's the management.
Yes, I see the gentleman, hardly, the only voted word in this is estimated, so, I appreciate that. Um. So, uh, this grant, as far as matching, uh, budgeted, in the budget to cover the match, yes, okay. Fantastic. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, something we get every year that assists us greatly with our operations.
That's correct.
All right, so your motion is to, you know, approval to execute it or just accept? What's your answer?
Will be approval for Mr. Hicks to sign, uh, at the official notice, that's it.
So, if I can input, um, seek approval for the administrator and the nine one one director to operate the proceedings, so that's getting. All right, so we need a motion to allow administrator and the nine one one director to execute any grant documents related to the public policy management. So, motion by Mr. Carroll.
Second.
Second by Miss Clark. If there any discussion or questions? And I'll call for a vote, although, please, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven. All right, up next, um, contract purchase sale for the land.
For a number of years, if you look at exhibit A. Uh, for a number of years, the county, uh, through the, uh. Waste manager has been leasing. That's rip lands, fifty foot strip of land that. Far under, we needed extra room in order to, uh, kind of get people in and out of there, it's a fairly tight area there, all the street runs. Um, and we continued to lease that property at, uh, I think it's twelve hundred dollars a month. For the last, gosh, I don't know how many years, uh. The owners of the property at the time were not interested in, we, we, we. Recently, they came forward and said that. Tell us a piece, ten foot strip, which would allow us to expand that drive. Then they came back and said, how about the whole fifty feet, uh. Original proposal on the ten foot, ten thousand dollars, they come back fifteen thousand. In the long run, that is a great savings, the county resolves ownership, it resolves any liability issue regarding that expense up already. Uh, and, and, uh, talk to Mr. Byers. They're, they're very happy to do this, I think it's a very feasible proposal, certainly in long run, will aid the city of county and. Make you that site, that green dock site, a lot better than what it is today. It'd be our recommendation to enter the contract and, uh, plus the deal with the buyer.
Thank you, and, uh, just, those don't have calculated, that is twelve and a half months of his payment. And five hundred bucks, uh, so, in a year and a half a month, paper itself, making this purpose. Are there any questions, uh, for the attorney before I call for a motion?
It was something, our property and their brand, the prior open, was so close together, we had to negotiate and did so with previous owners. To get that fifty foot buffer, well, of, of, because of trash flowing over. People having to drive out of the road bed and things of that nature, so, it, it's been a headache for. I, I've been here a few years, it's been a headache for most of those years. This will resolve problems, resolve the, the, the.
All right, any other questions? And I'll call for a motion, uh, to approve resolution twenty-three dash twenty-one C, uh, authorizing us to purchase this property presented. First to approve resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-one C. That's what I asked to care. And then it'll come out with a bunch of ten there, right?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryan. Any discussion? All for that, although, please, please raise your right hand. Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, and please thank them for their being reasonable and willing to work with us.
Good, good.
A lot of people see county, they, but for us.
All right, good, good.
All right, next, is the special component, roads and bridges, uh. That we have heard from, that is, uh, pains, uh, we have some issues, uh, in the county, need to be addressed. Uh, she got to do to, um, bridges that are closed, uh, and. S C D of T, periodically does a. Survey of all the bridges, and that's six, they've been closed four years, I believe they all came from that. That last evaluation. Um, the county does do some work, uh, on overpasses, we have a lot of, we're not hard to hope, they're not to walk through and reach that, uh. Um, we have the ability to do that internally, and we're blessed for that, but we don't have the ability internally to do the big bridges. And I don't, I don't tend to know the terminology, two, three, four band bridges, but. We have, we just don't have the internal ability, we rely on outside contractors, um, to help us with that, or the B O T themselves. Um, our biggest funding arm for county roads and bridges is the County Transportation Commission. Uh, which was set up, uh, in, uh, maybe even a little before by the state, uh, legislation. And they are, uh, measures appointed by the state delegation, and each year, we get allocation, um, the money comes off the gas tax. Um, the extra money you pay on, on the gas tax, and as you know, every year, that's been, uh, slowly increasing up. Uh, state law requires us to contribute twenty-five percent of what we receive. Back to the state D O T for state maintained roads. Uh, Lawrence County's allocations flutter around that two point two million, uh, a year, have been. Past little bit, uh, and the delegation, uh, I'll start getting to here, delegation's been extremely grateful. About several years to give us an allocation and a little birdie tell me there's a possibility officially approved, it may see a little more, uh, which would be great. Um, only going to get on the soapbox in public, but I'm going to get one tonight, I'm frustrated at how those funds have been spent. over the last few years. Uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, Lawrence County received two point two million change as well as a million dollar edge, we've got the appropriations. The C T C immediately gave the one million D O T for county roads. Um, and then, I'm right next, and then on the county, they did a lot less. Uh, over the past through twenty-four months, the C T C has given sixty-three point five percent of the money we perceive back to the state. Uh, open, I said, we're legally required to get twenty-five, our local C T C for some reason voted to give thirty-three percent back. Uh, which is, that's sixty-three and a half is still way over, uh, that thirty-three percent harm. Uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, the county received our normal two point two millions change as well as the state appropriation of five million dollars, uh, which is incredible. Um, and we are extremely grateful for the state for doing that. And on twenty twenty-three year money spent on county roads, and it was seventeen of them, eight point four five miles. Uh, out of that seven million, they spent one right under one point four million, one million, three hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars on county, uh, roads. When I've talked to a few of their commissioners about working with, uh, the county, um, on funding more, especially bridges, and we got seven million dollars coming in. Uh, the bridges we have have the four main garden bridges that have been quoted estimated and, uh, roughly, I'll pop my head. Uh, one point four million, one point one million, nine hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand are the costs on the top priority bridges, if we had any replacing right now. Uh, I sure would love to see some of that money come out of that five million extra, uh, to go towards that, but I was told by two they just have to do this. I find that it was an admission statement that they do roads and bridges, and if they were on the bridges, they should probably take it out. Um, however, um, I know they're an integral part of our community and our system and how things work. Um, but it is frustrating to see state allocate funds to our county and have a group of people that this county council who's elected, wherever that the people have zero control over that group and what, how they spend money, what they spend money on. We are very fortunate that they take our recommendations from the county because they do get, uh, Senator Wilson out here in the audience, he, he does really works really hard to get the county projects together to present to the C T C. Um, and they are normally very, um, gracious in what they do for us over the years, but to be given sixty-three and a half percent away back to the state for me is way too much. Um, and I'd love to see that, that change. Uh, right now. Billy, you correct me if I'm wrong. But roughly their unallocated balance is, uh, they actually have a pretty high balance, but there's a lot of money that's already been promised for good projects. Um, their current unallocated balance is right around one point seven million, uh, as well as about a half million dollars, uh, in Columbia that has been uh, because the way it works with states, we have to write them a check and then they do the project and whatever left over they will hold for us or when it gets to a certain amount, they write it back, usually the C T C. So basically they're spending on roughly two point two million dollars, you could say, um, of funds. Uh, I know they have a meeting next Tuesday, somewhere.
So last, before Thursday, February month, so the, okay.
Twenty-second.
Yeah.
There. Okay. I think I'm on my. Twenty-second, Billy.
Yeah, there's five Thursdays.
That's right. So they were actually meeting for our next council meeting. I would like to make a motion that the Orange County C T C consider repairing our top priority bridge, which is, what is our, and give the road name?
Oh, that's a road.
That's a road, church road.
Am I right?
What do you mean, church road? Airs Road, Church Road is our top priority bridge. Um, I would like them to consider using their, uh, current unallocated balance, uh, to do that, which will still leave them relatively healthy compared to where they normally are. Uh, their unallocated fund balance, uh, and I would make that a form of a motion to request, I know we can't make them do anything. But that would be a request from county council that they take a vote and have discussion on placing Airs Road Church Road.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second by Mr. Ryan. There any discussion on the motion? We continue discussion on bridge funding. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table?
I've got a couple of questions.
Hold on. Who wants to go first, sorry?
If, if, if we request money, do they have documents that they're not going to give it to us?
And is there a right to? As what they do, that's why I'm glad that their next meeting is before ours, because we will have a different discussion at the next meeting. State statute does allow the delegation, uh, to have a delegation meeting and dissolve the C T C and allow county council to become the governing body for those C, C funds from the, uh, S D O T. However, I don't really want to go down that road. Uh, I would much rather see us work together with current C T C to fix our problems.
And I, uh, I've worked with, we're, I'm a king, Bo Curry, Bo is the chairman. And, uh, I know Bo and, and Bo's all far ahead from that, these bridges. Uh, but Bo feels like we're getting bad, you know, and my thing is I started with, as we were finished days back, everybody's got a boss, they got a boss. And they buck us on it. Well, you start playing dirty food. Some of them, they have to drive five miles one way, some other way. Then they gotta come back for the rest of the five miles. They make that trip. I have done that. They do math and this been going on for three, four weeks.
And I, and I spoke to the, um, mentioned the numbers, we get two point two million annually, and we've been extremely blessed by the state D O T there. And I do recognize that even though they're giving a bunch of S D O T, it does benefit our citizens. However, the S D O T budget is north of a billion dollars annually. Our normal two point two million allocation will take four hundred and forty-five years roughly to get to a billion dollars. And we're giving them half of our money back, more than half of our money. And I just think that's wrong.
Yeah, I thought. So about there. It, I don't think it, it's something like that. It's, then there's these main features, it really means easier to do it. And they, they end up, thanks, they require thirty-three percent last.
Thirty-three percent is, is what they are leading up to. These portion bonuses are coming annually, this one time month. They cap those at twenty-five percent. You can just give twenty-five percent of that back, but yet they chose to give almost half of us.
In the last couple of years, it's been way above thirty-three percent.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
Sixty-three and a half.
Sixty-three and a half is the average for the last two fiscal years.
Well, they, they all been called up, they knew that one couple of years.
Mr. Kirkland. Chairman, I have an opportunity to go to Low Country occasionally on business and pleasure. If you want to see where your money is, it's in Charles. They have bridges down there that you can pave every road and, and jump on this fresh on this bridge. Ms. Anderson, you have something?
No, I, I'm going to see one of those bridges. I'll try to make sure on the right road. If that was, um, one of, one of, one of them, I think I've been there. There on that road, okay. But, um, if they can't do anything right now, probably they can probably, but they
Well, that's, um.
The next time that they
I'm not admitting much, so that's part of the name. I know that those bridges are expensive and we're only giving the two point two. Um, it would be difficult to do some roads and do bridges, uh, but I personally like to see money set aside to go toward bridges so that it builds up over two years, maybe even three years from these large ones. And when the money goes up, then you can once we knock out, um, these larger, more expensive ones, it won't be as bad. Um, but when we got seven million dollars last year, there's no reason, one, if not two or three of those bridges should have been taken care of.
Five, eight, nine, ten dollars.
I agree.
I'll, I'll agree with everything you've said. And I'll just say this, uh, kind of put Lawrence County first.
Ms. Clark, you have anything? All right, uh, motion on the table. I counsel, uh, the motion is the county council request that the C T C take up, uh, discussion and a vote on spending their roughly two point two million dollar unallocated balance to place uh, as needed or repair, whatever the proper terminology needs to be. Uh, the Airs Road Church Bridge Road, which is our number one, uh, priority, closed bridge. Oh, there's a favor, please raise your right hand. Seventeen. All right, thank you. Um, while we're still on this topic, is there any other discussion about county roads and or bridges? Is there any question about how it works? I mean, any questions, discussion time, somebody asked?
Got one more time. Mr. He, we've been working on it, right?
That's correct. So we are working on it and it's, we're crawling before walking, but we started one this year and we're going to start funding it.
If I'm correct, we are we're going to ask the C T C to start adding, you know, some to this fund every year and then the county, that's, I don't know, that's funded some to it.
Yes, so I understand.
Better while we're getting caught up, it's better just to start.
Either absolutely, yes. Um, and something else I'll note to, um, and when the C T C allocates towards the county roads, um, our roads department, so we do have roads department, we do have paving capabilities, um, obviously the, the larger roads is easier to allow a contractor to undo it, and we are limited on how big of a job we can handle. We got to do a phenomenal job. But before, uh, a contractor comes in to do paving on a county road, our guys go out and they do all the cleaning, they got the crews back, they, uh, dig the dishes out. They do the deep depth action. So in the contract on state county road, all they do is pull up with the, the basketball, the paper, and a roller. And they don't have to do the prep work, um, just looking, uh, some of the best years, five days, it's made five thousand. One, uh, section, uh, twenty thousand on another and fifty-nine thousand, uh, much recently on the road projects. And that, what that does, something speeds up the paving process, um, and it ensures that our county roads are, you know, they've got a contract coming. It allows our guys to put their eyes on it and get it ready, make sure that there aren't any corners thud or anything goes wrong. Um, but we're not getting reimbursed for that in the C T C. So people are basically going to work for, for them. It does have its price. But, um, I do want to recognize our roads and bridges department who do a phenomenal job with all that they do, uh, in the small projects and handling what they can. So I do want to.
Station, so, um, there is a, uh, improvement in the county on some of the ways. If you ride through, you can see some improved, yeah, uh, wherever the C T P, uh, state or whoever it is doing it, you do see some progress, some signage. And I appreciate that because, uh, I think a lot of people have been waiting a long time, but I can remember a time when, uh, the C T C was just local people. And the county appointed them. And they would get out and ride the roads and select the worst roads to use. So I don't know if this typically is doing the same thing, make sure that they are really make, uh, give the road that is the worst road. But many of them, and money still had running, they coming in. Not just want to be the boss of the money.
They, they do do a ride, um, the state will submit their request, uh, for building, we submit all the C. Then they coordinate, they use all the plan. They do a, rough about as well as cities have an opportunity to request as well. Uh, they do do some national and help the cities when they can and when the question made. Any other discussion on roads and bridges? Um, any other roads and bridges? And then we will move to county council comments. All right, Mr. Trump.
Well, thank you for coming out and resonates to our bids and that we kind of, that special recognition for our representative, the, and all the people coming out.
Thanks, Chairman. Um, I had a very busy past couple of weeks in my district. Uh, my folks have been ringing a lot. Uh, just a lot of, uh, unique situations happening across my district and I am thankful, uh, that my district bills are being called in to help resolve some problems. Uh, and I had two recent problems, I come up that involved, I want to just give a shout out to our politics works director, Dale Satterfield. So, uh, Ridge Bridges Director, Tim Satter, for helping with two, uh, different situations, uh, with two different people, two places in the county. Uh, and the, not only were they so helpful, uh, in hearing the complaint, but the resolution to these two problems was incredible. Uh, and the feedback that I have received from those two constituents has been incredible. Uh, and they were thoroughly impressed with both Dale Satterfield and Satter for the way in which they helped resolve the problem. So, so I want to give a couple of shout outs. We do have a very effective team. Uh, Lawrence County is well equipped to, uh, solve these problems and I am honored to have Dale Satterfield and Tim Satter.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be moving toward the end of the, of the season. I just wanted to express to my fellow council members that I appreciate the way that they handled, um, this one. Sure, let's be honest. I'll close this up, um, appreciate the discussion and support on road and bridges initiatives. Um, I hope we can make some ground and get somewhere on that. Uh, thank you, all of our officers that are here tonight and all y'all do day in, day out, already. A lot of part of the community that are not always appreciated. Thank you. Y'all appreciate it. But it's almost done. We got one more meeting. That'll be finalized, no echo, just a couple of sentences. Seems to get easier and easier every year and we're working probably on, plus have the greater administration staff. Mostly run work can make it easier. Here, I have nothing else. I'll call this meeting adjourned.